I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of May 27th. Tonight's virtual meeting is being broadcast live on Selco channels 29 and 329, and streamed live on the Shrewsbury Media Connection website. I'd like to thank SSMC manager Mark Sarah, as well as the Shrewsbury Public Schools IT Director Brian LaRue for helping us with these meetings. It will be rebroadcast between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting on June 3rd. And the public participation portion of our meeting is suspended as this is a virtual meeting. However, if anybody has any questions or comments, they can always email the school committee at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. First on the agenda is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anybody have anything this evening? John?
Yes, Sandy. Speaking of virtual meetings, we had a busy schedule over the last week, attending some year-end award ceremonies and senior tributes. Just wanted to thank all those involved. Wednesday night was at the Performing Arts Award Ceremony, and Thursday night was the Scholarship Awards. Both great productions and tributes to our seniors. And then yesterday, attended the Little Colonials Zoom class with the preschoolers. And yesterday was the annual Senior Walk. What they do is typically they have the students that attended Little Colonials when they were preschoolers come in in their cap and gowns and visit with the current preschoolers. We were able to do that successfully on Zoom. I thought it was a great event with Sarah Monica and Heather Senna and Jeff Lane. Were able to pump in the pomps and circumstance music and had a nice conversation with the preschoolers. So, great event and well done by everyone. And then, of course, last night was the ETS News Honey Bear Awards. Again, their year-end ceremony for the TV students in the high school in a retrospective and tribute to the senior students. So, all great events and really, really fun to attend. So, thank you to all involved.
Great. Thanks, John. Anyone else? Lindsay?
Yeah, and in similar vein, I want to just acknowledge some really incredible educators finding creative ways to go above and beyond. The Six Blue team, Ms. Hendricks and Ms. Christie, did a drive-by to everyone's home and left signs on their yards of "We miss you, Six Blue." And all the kids were thrilled to see the teachers in their yards. On Saturday, no less, balloons covering the car, lots of positivity, and teachers really just figuring out ways to connect with individual students. So, a big shout-out to Ms. Landers and Ms. Cormier at Patton School, who started an individual reading program with my son, learned he was interested in World War II, go figure, and found a good age-appropriate book and are now doing a reading pair with him to just keep him going and have a new way to have a connection. So, huge, huge shout-outs to all the creative ways that educators are trying to figure out how to connect in these crazy times of variable. So, thank you to all of them.
Great. Thank you, Lindsay. Anyone else? I think we're all set. Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Some great news to report from a couple of our competitive Shrewsbury High School teams. I want to congratulate our eSports team, who once again won both Massachusetts eSports state titles recently. eSports, for those who don't know, is essentially electronic gaming done in a team format. From over 30-plus teams across Massachusetts high schools, the teams for the League of Legends competition and the Rocket League competition, both again won state titles. Since eSports became a competitive sport in Massachusetts high schools, Shrewsbury High School is the one and only state champion school that now has won seven state championships combined. So, congratulations to Coach Steve McKinstry and to all the team members on their success. I also want to report that the Shrewsbury High School Speech and Debate Team continued its remarkable season. The team finished in second place overall in the state championship tournament, which was an incredible achievement, especially given that they had to make the shift from in-person speech and debate to doing it in a remote manner online. And that was really a wonderful example of adapting to new circumstances and continuing to excel. So, congratulations to all the students on the Speech and Debate Team for their second-place finish. I also want to congratulate three individual state champions. Sophia Peng won the state championship in informative speaking. Halima Siddiqui won the state championship in poetry reading. And Pranav Badlamudi won the state championship in play reading. So, congratulations to those three individual champions. Congratulations to the team and to their coach, Mark Richatelli, for another year of excellence in speech and debate. And finally, I just want to remind everyone that we're into our last few days of the 2,200-minute challenge for physical activity for our community in the month of May to honor the class of 2020. Like me, you probably forgot to log some of your minutes walking or doing yard work or whatever it might be that you were doing to be physically active. You can find the link on our website, and you can feel free to log any minutes that you haven't had the chance to over the course of the month, see how many we can get to and try to meet that threshold. I want to again thank the Shrewsbury High School Physical Education educators for putting this out there and motivating our community to keep exercising and moving during the school closure period. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first-time scheduled appointment this evening will be an update from Dr. Sawyer and District Administrators regarding the school districts' response to the COVID-19 school closure.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I'm going to share my screen here. And... Just want to confirm you can see that?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is another update to the community relative to the work that's been happening during the school closure period, which has been going on for some time now, obviously. As always, want to start with a reminder of our three key messages, that the health and well-being of our students and staff and families is our first priority. Secondly, that this being, of course, an extraordinary time in our history, everyone in our community has a collective responsibility to respond to this challenge. And I deeply appreciate the ways in which our educators, sports staff, families, students have been stepping up. And just as was mentioned in some of the school community reports earlier, to try to make the best of this very difficult situation. And third, even though our schools are closed, of course, we continue to support our students and families and staff from a distance, and we continue to try to find ways to empower continued student learning. And Ms. Clutter will speak a little bit in a moment to some of the ways that we continue to do that. I did want to provide an update to the community on the ways that we're honoring our senior class of 2020. We did have some conversation about this at our last school committee meeting, which was two weeks ago. Since that time, Governor Baker issued the updated guidance for the state. The Department of Education issued some updated guidance regarding graduation ceremonies. And I wanted to share with the community the plans that we have to honor our senior class. There are a variety of ways we're doing this, both a mixture of remote and in-person opportunities. They started with the award ceremonies that Mr. Wensky referenced last week. But coming this Friday, we did want to publicize, thanks to a generous anonymous family with a senior in the class of 2020, there's going to be what's being called the Friday Night Flyover, where there'll be an airplane flying around over Shrewsbury over between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. on Friday evening, pulling a sky banner congratulating the class of 2020. So, look up in the sky on Friday evening, see that banner being pulled by a plane. Additionally, on Tuesday, June 2nd, we will have a video broadcast of our commemoration ceremony. Typically, our commemoration takes place in Mechanics Hall. It involves a variety of opportunities for the class to celebrate its history over the course of its four years at Shrewsbury High School. We'll continue to do that in a remote way with pre-recorded speeches by the great Administrator Marie Monopoly, a special guest speaker, the selected faculty speaker from the class of 2020. So, look for that. That's always a surprise to most. Also, the unveiling of the class video will be part of that presentation as well. So, that will be broadcast. And all of these events will be broadcast on channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on the Shrewsbury Media Connection website as well. So, that's Tuesday, June 2nd at 7:00. On the following evening, Wednesday, June 3rd, beginning at 5:00, we're calling the Last Ride, which is a car parade for seniors and their families through the Shrewsbury High School campus. Those teachers and staff of Shrewsbury High School who are available and willing to come and available will be able to be lining the sidewalks of the campus. Students and their families, and we're encouraging families to drive so students can focus on waving to their teachers and taking pictures and video. They'll do a loop around the campus. There'll be more specific information coming out soon relative to how we're going to run a staggered arrival so that we minimize the traffic impact before people head up the hill to the campus for their last ride through campus as Shrewsbury High School students. So, we're looking forward to that. Following that, on Thursday, June 4th, is what we're calling Graduation Part One. That will be our traditional speeches and student rec, as well as student recognition. Again, broadcast on Selco and through the Shrewsbury Media Connection website. That will be the traditional speeches by class officers, as well as valedictorian and salutatorian remarks from Mr. Wensky, the Vice Chair of the School Committee. Mr. Buzidlow will certify the class. I will make some brief remarks as well. That all, again, was pre-recorded, and we broadcast at 7:00 on Thursday, June 4th. In addition to that, every student's name, graduate's name will be read. Their photograph will be included up on the screen when that happens to recognize their graduation from Shrewsbury High School. The week following that, between June 8th and June 12th, this will be by appointment. We will have in-person awarding of diplomas. That will be done by family members. We have a space staked out under a tent in the front of Shrewsbury High School that will have an appropriate backdrop with the town seal. And at a point in time, families and their graduate will come to the front of the high school, practicing, of course, all of the required social and physical distancing. They will be able to then have family members present the diploma to the graduate and confer that diploma. We will have a professional photographer on hand to take photos. We will be providing a photo of an individual shot of the graduate with their diploma, as well as a family photo that will be provided free of charge to each graduate. And it'll be, of course, Shrewsbury High School administrators will be on hand as well to congratulate them. While it will be probably a very brief amount of time relative to, you know, three or four minutes that that will have to take place in, it's still much longer than the few seconds when a graduate walks across the stage during a normal ceremony. And it'll be up close and personal for the families to be able to be part of that special moment. And then finally, moving ahead into the summer and the fall, the state is allowing in-person graduation celebrations following very strict protocols that they've outlined to one degree. Obviously, it will depend if the phased reopening of the state is continuing at that point. So, this is all subject to what the situation is at that time. But we are hopeful that we'll be able to have a celebration in the stadium at Shrewsbury High School, Central One Federal Credit Union Stadium, David J. Adams Memorial Field, where our graduates will be socially distant on the field. They'll be able to march into the stadium. They will be able to hear some brief remarks different from what's going to be broadcast next week and then be recognized individually in some way, potentially walk across the stage, again, if that's allowed at that time, and also take part in the traditional turning of the tassels. We are hopeful that some limited number of family members will be able to attend in the audience. Again, this is all subject to what the current situation will be at that time. And then finally, fast-forwarding to Thanksgiving later this year, the Friday after Thanksgiving is we are scheduling a senior faculty gathering at Shrewsbury High School. Typically, what seniors often say is their favorite event of the graduation week is the Senior Faculty Dinner, which traditionally takes place in a hotel ballroom. And it's a time where students tend to have their yearbook signed by each other and by faculty members, enjoy dinner with teachers and staff, and are able to celebrate the class one last time before graduation. Given that that's not possible now, we're looking to have a similar type of event at Shrewsbury High School, sort of essentially the first reunion of the class of 2020, when we expect the vast majority will be home for Thanksgiving vacation at that point. So, I do want to thank Mr. Buzidlow, Ms. Monopoly, the rest of the team at Shrewsbury High School, the class officers of 2020 and the class advisors for their input, the input that all of the different families and students who contributed to the survey on how to best recognize the senior class under the circumstances of the pandemic. I think this is a really excellent plan. We appreciate the positive feedback we received on it. And we think that under the circumstances, it's our absolute best effort to recognize the seniors for graduating and for their careers here in the Shrewsbury Public Schools. So, happy to share that information with the community. At this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Clutter, who will talk a bit about some of the work we're doing with remote learning. And that will be followed by some information from Ms. Belcito relative to some information around special education.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I want to begin by saying again how proud I am of the educators in our district, individually and collectively, both on the school side and on the home front. Things are going swimmingly, so to speak, because everybody has really done their part. What's... Win-Place Now seems to be working really well for students and families, as well as educators. And I know that that hasn't been easy. I also know that people need some acknowledgement of the work that they're doing because we'll be focused on continuing remote learning right to the end. So far, we have 1,099 hits on the parent PD page, so I know parents are working hard to sharpen their skills too, and I hope those tutorials have helped. I want to share the two illustrations. The first one is from Leo Leonis Swimming. So, if you have an elementary student, or if you did in the day, you'll recognize that, where the small fry band together to meet a sizable challenge. And the second image on the right is more recent. It comes from a webinar hosted by Thomas Guske. And the subject of his talk was how assessment practices will evolve in remote learning environments. And I thought it was helpful to start this way to acknowledge both the collaboration that has enabled remote learning to be successful in Shrewsbury, but also to emphasize the need that we'll have to continue to adapt to keep students and teachers moving forward together. Some of the things we're learning about engaging students will improve lessons for the long haul, which in turn really engages and excites our educators. And I look very much forward to every bit of the next two weeks because I think in some ways, as Mrs. Heffernan referred to, some of the things that our educators have learned are going to be really exciting in terms of teaching and learning when we can come back to face-to-face instruction. So, professional development continues. This is a shot that I shared earlier when I was talking about the blended opportunities we provided staff. We've had in-house training using educators from Shrewsbury, as well as outside providers like EdTech Teacher. And when I first structured PD sessions, I really wasn't sure how many staff would be able to sign on. And so many did that we have scheduled follow-up sessions. EdTech Teacher will return to work with our district on June 4th. And one of the things I think has been a real benefit is that the way we've structured PD allows for flexibility to meet the diverse needs of our staff learners. So, everything that we're doing is recorded so that people who cannot attend live can watch it later, and people who need more than one viewing can watch it again. And also, one of the things that's been nice about the remote learning structure is that everybody can access it at the same way. So, our paraprofessionals have been able to engage in the professional development that we've structured, as well as some of our professionals accessing some of the things that have been built by Meg's Department for Paraprofessionals. So, like the experiences we're creating for students, the hybrid model means that teachers can really engage across working groups as well. And I just want to acknowledge Lynn Doherty, Kelly Finneran, Shawna Powers, Sarah Matthews, Erin Kendrick, as well as Greg and Avra from EdTech Teacher. I also want to say that there are many other educators that I don't know about who have really contributed in smaller and silent ways on their teams or their departments. One of the pieces of feedback that just keeps coming back to me, which is really gratifying, is how often people think about the silver lining of collaboration that's helped everyone to meet the different challenges that we're facing as part of remote learning. So, this is a good example of that. What you see on the left-hand side is an example of a remote learning plan for second grade. And this is a choice board that was put together by the educators in our Allied Arts Departments, or Art, PE, Music, and Media. And, you know, in talking about the asynchronous lessons that a content teams have put together, one of the things that I think I missed a chance to highlight earlier was the work that our specialists are doing to push out asynchronous lessons. So, sometimes there's more collaboration happening that I can keep up with, and I think that's a really good thing. What you see here on the right-hand side is a lesson developed by the Art Department. So, every art teacher has rotated responsibilities to create lessons so that in this way, every student got to have every art teacher as their teacher at the elementary level. In music, although technology has limited the way we structure chorus because you can't really sing together on Zoom, the department has embraced CSO as a way to encourage mini concerts and to have students share their work in music. And as we've already talked about, the Physical Education Department has contributed a lot in terms of structuring community and events around fitness, like the Virtual 5K. And their next task will be thinking about how do we have a virtual field day? So, I just want to make sure that when we're talking about teaching and learning, we're talking about the contributions of all of our educators from all of our departments because I think that that's why I think it's so important to start with a thank you. So, when we're looking next, we're thinking about this unique place that we're in. We're straddling kind of the present. And typically, at this time of year, we'd be thinking about closing ceremonies, celebrations, and then transitions. And one thing that we have to address as part of transitions is grading. So, in previous presentations I've given, we've talked about the diverse challenges students and families are facing, and assessment being one of them on the school end. And so, grading practices have been adjusted accordingly. So, what you'll see is the same, is that the report card form is familiar. Families will access the report card online, as they did for the last grading cycle. But one thing that's different is that you'll only see two grades. You won't see comments on work habits or howls because there's no way of assessing kind of what work habits look like in a remote environment. But students in grades kindergarten to eight, I'm sorry, pre-K to eight, will receive either an incomplete or a complete. And at the high school, either a pass/fail grade. And one of the things I wanted to mention is that an incomplete or failing grade means that a student didn't engage in remote learning even when they were provided with additional support, extended time, or multiple opportunities, or that they didn't meet the level of engagement based on expectations that were communicated. So, an incomplete grade does not mean that a child should be considered for retention because, given the extended closure, it's expected that some children will return with gaps, and our educators will be prepared to address them. Everybody's been in it together. And so, we know that the fall semester will not look as most fall semesters do. After we complete closure activities, we'll need to think about transitions to the following grade level. And part of that is planning well for summer learning. We're excited about strengthening our growing relationship with the Shrewsbury Public Library, whose staff there are also trying to figure out how they address the needs of a diverse user group remotely. And I want to thank Priya Raytnam, Sonya Dratar, and Annie King, who have worked with some of the curriculum team to think about what summer reading will look like this coming spring. So, I just want you to think about staying tuned for that information because we're excited about developing kind of adventures in reading for our students. And the last thing that's more serious is thinking about something that you may have heard called the Summer Slide, which sounds fun, but keeps me up at night. Even in the best of times, the idea that students will regress in their learning is worrying. And the statistics on regression suggest that there's both loss in reading and math for students that don't practice those skills, and that that loss is exacerbated for students that left school below benchmark. One of the things that we're hearing in terms of the COVID environment is that students could lose up to two months of their learning depending on the subject area, and that one of the biggest concerns is loss in math. The good news is that that's preventable. Just 10 minutes a day in each subject will really help kids kind of retain the skills that they've built. But it means that we need parents as partners more than ever because these are not typical times. And the tools that we put out for practice are going to have to be really engaging for kids because they've been engaged in remote learning for a while. So, we know that parents are more than ready to press pause on teaching careers. And the tools need to be user-friendly for both students and adults. So, the best way to make sure that all those efforts on the home front have not gone in vain is to make sure you're thinking about supporting your child and practicing the skills that they've built. And we're looking to make that easier for families by creating some resources that they can access all summer. And the Department of Education is thinking about this too. So, they've issued some recommendations in terms of thinking about how to make sure that we're addressing the possibility of learning gaps, how to talk to the community about it. You'll hear Mrs. Belcito talk a little bit about extended summer learning. But in general education, it's also really important for us to think about that. So, we're really focused on how we can use technology to engage and empower our students. So, in the last presentation, I shared the CSO statistics, which show how many comments we've collected from parents, likes and visits by families as they've looked at student work. And we use those statistics to gauge how our investment in those new tools are helping us connect home and school. And we're thinking about the same thing in terms of the summer. So, we applied for a grant through the Department of Education for ST Math. And you'll see these two animal characters. What they have in common is that they're designed to really engage students in practice. The two programs that we've taken the closest look at are ST Math, represented by Gigi the Penguin on the left, and Freckle, which is the pig on the right. And I'm working with vendors right now in hopes of being able to secure some resources to support students after June 16th and through the summer. And I'll be happy to detail that more as plans finalize. But for now, I wanted to give you a sense of what I mean by "resources" to support students over the summer. So, ST Math is a pre-K to eight visual instructional program that is based on neuroscience, and it really focuses on spatial-temporal reasoning ability to solve math problems. And it's kind of a unique approach. It's very language-free. It's very visual. And it's essentially designed to encourage students to engage in what they call productive struggle. Freckle is more traditional, kind of a practice site, where students can practice beyond math in English Language Arts, Social Studies, and even Science. And they're both adaptable programs, meaning they give you a brief assessment when students initially log on, and then they adjust content as they go so that a student gets differentiated support. So, we might both start out in the assessment in the same, but my answers then give me a different level of skill practice than somebody else who takes the assessment and gets more right answers than I do. And the notion here is to find a way to support a student at a just-right level in a way that feels really fun because 10 minutes doesn't sound like a long time. But being able to prevent the Summer Slide means a consistent 10 minutes every day. We want kids to really look forward to doing that. So, both resources have an adaptive assessment component that will also help us when we are able to come back to school because we're able to share that data with the teachers and think about, okay, so how do we put together some instructional groups based on what we've learned about kids in their practice over the summer? And the Department of Education is also thinking about this, and they're putting together some resources for families that are available through the state. I don't have a lot of information to share about that because they haven't reduced... They haven't released the information yet. But I know that they're thinking about this from a bigger scale even than we are here in Shrewsbury. So, more to come on summer reading and summer supports. But one of the things I really want to make sure parents are thinking about is how can you extend the routines that you've established into the summer so that you're thinking about that magic 10 minutes a day for each subject? Because all it takes is 10 minutes, and everybody's been working so hard to engage kids. I really don't want us to lose the progress that we've made. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Clutter. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Belcito, who has some information regarding our special education program.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Tonight, I'd like to give a couple of updates regarding extended school year in special education and a team meeting consent form. Over the past couple of months, Russell Johnston, the Senior Associate Commissioner for Education, begins almost all of his calls across the Commonwealth with these quotes: "Operate from confidence, not fear, and we're better together." "We continue to maintain a student-centered approach to our work with clear communication with families on various procedures and processes in both special education and student services, things like timelines, meetings, service plans, learning goals, and progress monitoring." The list goes on and on. And we continue to climb the mountain I spoke about a few weeks ago. We've made the best of plans and have had to change them. We have made statements and have had to edit them. But we do all of these things with keeping in mind what is best for our students and families. We have made statements and have had to edit them, but we do all of these things with keeping in mind what is best for our students and families. So tonight I will discuss two topics that may seem simple to some, but impact carry a heavier backpack for others. Extended school year is, is an enormous concern for our staff and families of students who struggle with regression and or recruitment. Summer programming is essential for some students to maintain or prevent learning loss. But what does this look like during these times? On May 22nd, the district received the following update regarding extended school year. The Department of Education is hoping for some in-person summer services that can be safely implemented. Um, for summer school, recreation camps. Um, the department recognizes the unique characteristics of extended school year in the advanced planning required. We're already trying to plan for staffing, transportation, building use and safety measures. Extended school year will require an extraordinary, everly high level of preparedness in order to ensure the health and safety of our students. So when you take a look at this slide, this is straight from the Department of Education's, um, call last week. And when we think about summer services, that what they're saying is possibly or maybe. With required safety measures, we'd be able to have limited or some in-person extended school year. If not, we will be remote only and summer services would be provided and we wouldn't have to worry about certain safety precautions. For us, um, limited or some in-person extended school year services might need individual or small group tutoring, individual or small group therapies. The potential for more in-person services to be made available later in the summer is also a consideration as additional health and safety guidelines become available to us. So our next steps are, we are continuing to for remote extended school year services. We have contingency plans. We're limited in-person services and working out the details continues on a daily basis. And we remain open to increased in-person services later in the summer as additional guidance becomes available. And as always, we will continue to communicate any final decisions with our families. On May 13th, an advocacy advocacy group called Sped Watch asserted that some school districts across Massachusetts are requiring parents to consent to certain conditions. If they wish to schedule a virtual IEP meeting for their student. In particular, it was stated that the consent form requires parents to waive procedural violations in IEP timelines. Things, um, from this group have been across social media. They've been on certain news, um. You know, reported on things like, um, patch.com. They've been spread across parents, um, different listservs. And as we all are aware, this has been a period of rapid change in both how school districts deliver services to students. And in the guidance that school districts have received, both at the federal and state levels. In my review of the Department of Education's guidance on the issue of timelines and virtual IEP meetings. I considered the March 26th, 2020 revised FAQ from the Department of Ed. As well as the slides from Zoom meetings with the department hosted on April 3rd, 9th, 17th, and May 1st and 8th. This review made it clear that the guidance from the Department of Education has changed significantly in responses to the changing directives. Received from both the federal government and in light of Governor Baker's April 21st order that schools shall remain closed for the remainder of the school year. What was concerning to me is that this organization would send a letter to the Department of Education suggesting. Our district was in violation of IEP timelines and/or are improperly asking parents to waive their rights. In fact, nothing could be further from the truth. We would never want our families to feel as though we are taking away any of their rights. In Shrewsbury, we have stated families can accept a virtual IEP meeting or agree to wait until the meeting can be held in person. Further, on May 13th, I reviewed the legal guidance and state guidance and notified team chairs and directors. That the form that we had sent out to families is null and void. Families that received and signed or reviewed this form should have received an email. This afternoon indicating this change and we will re- destroy any form that's in our, in any student record. Along with that, Dr. Sawyer will be sending a letter of assurance to the Department of Education on our behalf to indicate that we have revised our guidance to be consistent with the Department of Education's directive. To suggest that Shrewsbury was being cavalier, as stated in the complaint, was simply offensive. As anyone who knows the Herculean efforts that our district administrators and teachers have exhibited during this time. And there are many that could attest to this work. Under these ever-changing and unprecedented circumstances, it is anticipated that guidance will continue to evolve. And we do appreciate the community's support and patience as we navigate this together. Thank you for allowing me this time and to share this important information with families. And as you can see on the slide. That is what the form looks like and I have put, um, the large words void. Um, so therefore I hope the community understands that if it is in circulation that we are no longer using it. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Clutter, Ms. Belcito. And before I turn it over to, uh, the chair, I would just like to reiterate. Uh, and first of all, thank, uh, in particular, our special educators. Um, and within the Special Education Department, our, our team chairs and special education directors, uh, who have been doing, uh. Really, uh, extraordinary amount of work, uh, and, uh, under circumstances that keep shifting under their feet in terms of. Continuously changing guidance from the, the federal and state government. Um, their intent is always to provide the best possible opportunity to our special education families, uh, and to make sure that we're operating within. Uh, whatever regulations and expectations, uh, that there are for us legally. Uh, with our core values in mind, doing what's best for students and their families. So I want to thank them for their work. Um, I share Ms. Belcito's frustration, uh, but certainly assure the community, uh, that we stand on our long, our long track record. Uh, of doing the right thing and, uh, we certainly look forward to the continued collaboration with our families of students with special needs. As we work through this, uh, very unprecedented time together. So, uh, with that, we'd be happy to take any questions the committee has on any of the topics that we addressed.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Wensky?
Uh, yes, uh, first off, thanks to Ms. Belcito and, and, uh, Mrs. Clutter for, uh, the, the overview. Really appreciate it every week. I know last week, uh, I was kind of missing it, to be honest with you, but, uh. Always very thorough and, uh, a lot of substance in your presentation. So I appreciate that. I do want to take a, a few steps back to Dr. Sawyer's, uh. Uh, you know, review of the graduation events in light of our discussion a couple of weeks ago, um, at our last school committee meeting. Uh, and just really want to thank Dr. Sawyer, uh, Todd Bzidlow, and, and really the entire SHS leadership team on, on what really was a careful planning. Uh, you know, a lot of really good sentiment and, and thought put into the schedule of events. Uh, I'm really getting that. Information as a parent, uh, reading, you know, such a, a pretty thorough, uh, plan was, it was pretty emotional read for me, you know, because just of the sentiment involved. And, uh, really turning these traditional ceremonies into what is family events at home. I could tell you just from my own family, last week we had a. Little watch party, uh, watching the, uh, the Performing Arts Awards and we had family in California that actually tuned in live as well. We're going to do the same for the events that are scheduled on each of the evenings, uh, that are on that, uh, schedule. Uh, but really most importantly, thanks for keeping everyone safe, uh, providing the class of 2020, you know, in. Uh, 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 a way to celebrate, you know, and preserving the moments that matter most. I think the in-person, uh, receipt of diplomas presented by families and having family pictures is really, really can't ask for much more than that in this climate. Uh, along with, uh, you know, graduation walk in mid-July. It's really outstanding. And I think. Anybody that read the nine-page outline, you know, with a schedule of events really is a testament to the genuine care this, this team exhibits for our students and. Uh, it's clear these plans were being drafted long before our last school committee meeting. Uh, and being as close, uh, to this leadership team as I have been over the last five years, really there was no doubt in my mind. Uh, that, uh, the team would find the best way to honor this class under the most challenging of circumstances. So thank you so much for that. Um, also just a note too, um, because we're in unusual times, uh, you know, there's certainly, uh. Work that needs to be done for seniors, uh, to turn in their iPads and all the info, all the, uh, materials, uh, and today, I know my son was involved with a very smooth. Uh, transition of, of, you know, giving back his iPad and they had already cleaned out his locker and provided him his, uh, you know, contents, very smooth. Round trip was like 20 minutes. So again, kudos to the team for really, uh, you know, organizing a, a very smooth, uh, event, uh, today. Smooth transition for the students. So thanks.
Thank you, John. Jason?
Uh, a comment and then a question. First of all, I, I want to echo Mr. Wensky's remarks and I want to extend my thanks and my compliments to Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Bzidlow and the entire administrative team. Both in central office at the end of the high school for their thorough and detailed plan to celebrate and recognize the members of the class of 2020. I think that the plan that was released was, uh, really as Mr. Wensky mentioned, extremely thorough, a wonderful way to recognize and honor our students. Uh, a number of different types of events, uh, both in-person and otherwise. Uh, recognizing our graduating seniors in every way that we possibly can, uh, really going above and beyond to recognize that class. So I just want to again, extend my thanks, my compliments there. A question for, uh, Ms. Clutter and or Dr. Sawyer. I did receive a few community questions earlier in the week following a piece that I know a lot of people saw in the Boston Globe. Uh, regarding Boston Public School students who had not, a significant portion, I think, one in five Boston Public School students who had not engaged at all with any type of remote learning. I know that this is a subject that's been touched on in past meetings, but I'm wondering if you can, uh, reiterate in light of, of, of some of those inquiries. How has Shrewsbury Public Schools approached the issue of students, uh, who have maybe not engaged with remote learning? How prevalent is that? And, and what is the approach that we're taking there?
So, uh, um, I think we're really fortunate in Shrewsbury that we've had from the beginning, our concern is really making sure that everybody was connected. So. In every building, there is, um, an Excel spreadsheet built where we were keeping track of students that, um, teachers weren't seeing. Sufficiently so that we could assign liaisons to reach out to the family. One of the things that we were concerned about early on was that, um, some families were getting deluged with communications from different staff members. So we were trying to. Identify what was the barrier. So, um, Brian and his team were addressing people who needed devices. Uh, Kathy Lang Madden, who's our, um, English Learning Director was, uh, focused on translations and, uh, services. And, and I have to give a shout out to, you know, some of our own staff who volunteered. Um, Ken Elmeda at the high school level in particular to kind of translate documents and reach out to families as one of those liaisons. Um, and then, you know, students that, um, we haven't had anybody not participate at all. We've had some students participate very minimally and/or participate and then go off the radar for a couple of weeks and then come back. And I think. Given the situation, um, there's a lot of different reasons for that. So. There are some students that may receive an incomplete, um, but they wouldn't receive that incomplete without a lot of communication. So. We don't have anybody that we haven't been able to reach that we're concerned about in that way. Um, but one of the things that were, you know, really that, that have driven frankly, my interest in having a platform to support students over the summer. Is that I want those statistics on who's engaging. Um, so that we can kind of think about what a follow-up method is over the summer when we don't have our educators' eyes on our kids. Um, and we know that some of those kids that were minimally engaged during remote learning are at highest risk.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Lindsay?
Yeah, I, uh, thank you all so very much. Maybe you can start off with Ms. Belcito. Um. I, like you, feel like the, the changing regulatory framework in which you're operating under, it's, it's, uh. Absolutely, it's beyond a moving target, right? And, and every time we seem to expect some guidance from the federal government, it's. Different than what we, directions we thought we were going. So that you're in a really rough predicament. Um, and appreciate that we're, you know, changing course and adapting and saying we're going to, we're going to go with a different, uh, different, um. Uh, format or form going forward and clarify, obviously the procedural rights are still protected. Have we had a lot of feedback from particular parents who were confused or did that just go out of a little, just a little confused in your timing? And so. Are they just getting those notices or are the parent community coming back to you in Shrewsbury saying, we're, we're confused with you, with, with how the district is handling some of this?
Um, so what happened around, um, May 13th, uh, we received the updated guidance. And that's when I reached out to the directors and team chairs and made that change. Um, for them to no longer use the, the hard copy form. And essentially what's happening. Um, prior to any meeting, the team chair or director who's facilitating the meeting, will just talk about how we're in a virtual room, uh, environment. And so families understand, um, as we all are, we're in our homes and how we need to know. Um, how to respect people's confidentiality as best we can, but it's certainly not an in-person meeting. Um, so there could be times that we could have a staff member that simply has a, a young child at home and they may have to turn their screen off for a minute. To help their, you know, toddler with something. Um, so for us, um, we wanted parents and families to be aware. Um, and that's why the form even was generated in the beginning. It had nothing to do with any kind of due process rights that parents have. It was more about talking about the environment that we're in, everybody understanding and, and agreeing to the terms of a virtual meeting. And the, in, in just doing it remotely is just so different. Um, as far as parent feedback, um, we have had some parents, this did not go out to all 1,000 families, um, in special education. This had begun to go out for families that were scheduled to have meetings. So we had over a hundred of the consent forms go out. Um, so that's why I thought it was important that the community hear about it. Because I feel like if there's a hundred forms out there, that's potentially a hundred families talking to other families or asking about other things. And then also the social media presence around this complaint. Um, I thought clarification was helpful. And after we had our CPAC meeting, um, you know, and they noted, um, that they had heard about the consent form too. Um, that I thought it was important that we continue the conversation. Out of the 114 forms, to be exact, that went out. Um, we only had two parents actually question the form to begin with. Most families were fine. And I do believe that's because they do work collaboratively with us. And we do have that trusting relationship where they can ask, what does this mean? And, or I'm not comfortable with it. Um, we want our families to be comfortable. Um, and I do believe the majority of them that had seen it and reviewed it were. Um, but I do think, you know, moving forward, having that statement and conversation prior to the start of a meeting will be. Especially important during this time, but certainly if there is a family that is not comfortable to have a meeting right now, we will certainly hold the meeting. When school resumes and have an in-person meeting for them. We want people to know we're here, um, but we also want them to know that it is their right to, to deny a meeting at this time.
Thank you so much for that clarification. It's a, it's so important that people understand sort of what the, what, what, what the edges of this are, right? And that, you know, I have been on plenty of business meetings and had a, a child or a spouse walk in and I think. This would never happen in a regular world and I'd be in a conference room with the door closed. So. Uh, that, that that's really what we're talking about here, that it's the, um, it's hard for the district to maintain a level of confidentiality because we don't. We don't control the other side of the Zoom screen. Uh, or sometimes even our own side of a Zoom screen if you're in a busy, a busy house. So. Um, I, I have complete confidence that the, the educators and the, um. Uh, special ed team that you have, uh, working, the staff have, have the best interest of our kids at heart, except for my personal experience as well. Um, but, but thank, thank you for the clarification. Can I do one other quest, question? I'm going to pivot. Um, Ms. Clutter, as a parent getting ready for the summer, uh, I want to just understand one thing you just said. Uh, 10 minutes a day per subject per all subjects? Or are we really focusing in summer on some of like the, the core math, ELA? I'm not going to say we're not going to do music and I'm not going to do science, but just help, help, help me clarify a little bit what is, what is sort of best practice.
Though I think if you have to put your priority in, in a couple of places, please don't shortchange reading or math. Uh, people who teach each of those subjects would advocate for 10 minutes for all of them because 10 minutes is the magic number. It's the magic minimum. But, um. I think it's really in, important to do a couple of things. One, to engage in math practice and reading and don't forget writing, you know, and I think. Nobody wants writing to be a chore. Um, so choice and voice and writing topic and. And a form of writing is important and you can take your cues from your children around that. But, um. The other piece is really making sure that we. Leverage this opportunity to engage kids around their interests. And so I think sometimes when we take a silo approach. We lose track of the opportunities for projects. And, um, you know, there are lots of organizations because, you know, essentially the difficulty we're in is a nationwide difficulty that are. Organizing to help think about how camp experiences can go remote. The, the Audubon is doing lovely things around bird tracking. You know, there's some. Some opportunities that frankly, wouldn't have been there i- in, in good times that, that now can engage kids around their passions. And I think. I'm very mindful of the importance of kids experiencing what it's like to be bored and to find an interest in a way out of that boredom. To explore projects as a way of growing. So as we're thinking about skills practice that is directive, that, you know, you, you make your kids do their chores as, as students. You also need to have them, um, drive their own learning somewhat. And that's a tricky balance for parents and, you know, as kids get older, they're more independent, but. 10 minutes is the minimum for reading and math.
Thank you. And I too would like to thank, um, Mr. Bzidlow and all of the high school administration team, as well as the senior class officers. The comment that I heard from several people was the plans to honor our seniors actually exceeded expectations. Families knew that it wouldn't be our tradition.
Plans to honor our seniors actually exceeded expectations. Families knew that it wouldn't be our traditional. Program, but it was something that was very well thought out and it's going to be meaningful for students in a different way. So. A huge thank you to everybody involved. It was a significant amount of work. And for Ms. Clouder, Ms. Belcito. Amy, you're you're always looking ahead and in looking at learning gaps and regression because we know on where we start in the fall. Those are concerns. That educators will have. This has been such a different way of learning. And you're already looking how to take care of that. And Ms. Belcito, adaptive as always, on top of any changes, and there have been a lot of changes for issue or time. You know. Slideshow from day to day, it's it's always changing. So a huge thank you to everybody involved. As we finish out the school year, I think there's going to be a lot of planning ahead and I know I feel very comfortable. I think the public is. Feel very comfortable that we have the right people to do that in something that is so unprecedented and but you're all doing such a wonderful job. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything further, Dr. Sawyer?
No, that's I can appreciate the reports from Ms. Clouder and Ms. Belcito and the work they put into them and the but more importantly, the leadership they're bringing to the table every day to help move things forward. Under the circumstances and appreciate the feedback from the committee.
Thank you. Okay, next, we are going to talk about a safer school grant. And way of background in February of 2020, Governor Baker's administration announced a second round competitive grant program to improve school safety. In the first round, Shrewsbury Public Schools obtained a seventy thousand dollar grant to replace and upgrade the Shrewsbury High School public address system. And in the second round, SPS applied for and was awarded a fifty thousand dollar grant for a replacement emergency communication slash public address system. For the Floral Street School. And Mr. Collins will provide information on this grant.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Fritz. Thank you for that background. This grant program is a competitive grant program. And so, as you mentioned, we did apply for an additional. Emergency communication system for fifty thousand dollars to be installed at Floral Street School. And that school now is nearly twenty three years old, so the the timing is right as well. This system, as I've reported earlier. Has some unique in great. Emergency communication features. Basically with a one touch button. It can send out to all locations, broadcast within the school building. Pre-recorded messages to place the school into lockdown, for example. And then simultaneously. Provide text and email alerts to. Other school administrators, central office. And emergency responders as well. So in the, you know, arena of time being of the essence, this is a great system to have. We already have this system. We're trying to expand it. To all of our schools eventually, but we already have it at Parker Road, Coolidge, Spring Street, Patton. Oak Middle School, and as you mentioned, Shrewsbury High School has just completed in October. So with that, like other grant programs. It is required that receives the approval of the school committee to receive the funds. There are no strings attached here. Other than to install the system as we. Made application for. And with your approval. We would plan to go forward as quickly as possible. And try to get this in for the month of June or July in preparation for the opening of the upcoming school year.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Nope, I don't see any. And thank you, Mr. Collins, for putting this out there. I mean, this is a lot of dollars that we can always use. And thank you very much for taking the time to do that. So there's no questions or comments. Dr. Sawyer, do you have anything further on this before I vote?
I also want to thank Mr. Collins for taking the time to make application for these funds. I appreciate that we were awarded them and. Wholeheartedly recommend the school committee accept the grant.
And I should make mention too that the these projects are. Technology projects in essence and. Is definitely worth reiterating. These things would not be happening without the assistance of Mr. Brian LaRue. Technology Director who is. Working closely on each of these installations to make sure it integrates with our. Existing systems and network and school operations as well.
Excellent, thank you. With no further comments or questions, may I have a motion that the committee vote to accept the fifty thousand dollars safer schools competitive. Edit of grant. And use such funds for their intended purpose of improving safety and security communications at Floral Street School.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, roll call vote is required. Dale?
Hi.
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Myself, I motion carries. Thank you again, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we are going to look at the resolution that was put before us, something I had drafted and we looked at it on May thirteenth. Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer have been updating the community consistently about the COVID pan COVID nineteen pandemic. Profound impact on the school district's finances and operations for the current academic year as well as for this for the next fiscal year. I mean, there is potential for spending cuts in the state budget. Leading to potential decreases in the amount of local aid and educational funding the state will provide to communities. So additional federal assistance to state and local governments, including public school districts, will be critical in order for us to maintain educational programming and staffing. Especially in the year ahead. So you've all looked at the draft of the resolution. Are there any changes or corrections? Any comments?
Just a comment. I want to thank the Chair for drafting this resolution. I think it's important that we take this position in support of additional federal stimulus. And just for folks who are watching at home, the importance of federal stimulus in the situation. People may watch the news or and they hear about government stimulus spending. It's important to note that. Municipalities and state governments must have balanced budgets each year. States and cities and towns cannot deficit spend, whereas the federal government can. So I think everybody appreciates. The dire financial picture that Shrewsbury is going to be in. What is less commonly appreciated is the fact that the Commonwealth's ability to assist us with state funding. Is going to be severely curtailed. The federal government doesn't step up to the plate with another relief package that includes funding for cities and towns and states, or at least just states. Of their own volition. State spending on social services has been necessarily driven through the roof by the pandemic, while they've seen a lot of state revenues dry up. So for the and of course, as as people know, Shrewsbury Public Schools depends quite a bit on state aid. So I just want to emphasize the importance. Of the federal government here and our need of the federal government to step in with additional stimulus support.
Thank you, Jason. Anything further? Dr. Sawyer, any comments?
Before we vote? I appreciate that you brought this forward, Ms. Fritz. I appreciate the the comments Mr. Palich made. I certainly. Underscore them and I think it's a good idea for the committee to take a. Public stance on this issue and convey that to our federal representatives.
Great, thank you. There's nothing further. May I have a motion that the committee vote to approve the draft Shrewsbury School Committee Resolution in support of increased federal support and stimulus funding. For public K through twelve education dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty and to provide a copy of this resolution to the district's federal congressional delegation.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second, Lindsay?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Dale?
Hi.
Myself, I motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer will provide a fiscal year twenty twenty one budget status update.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I'll begin and then make some remarks and share some slides and then we'll switch off and Mr. Collins will share some additional slides with some financial analysis. That will be important for you and the community to to understand. Let me begin by just saying that just in a in a general way. Our intent is always to try to be as transparent as possible with the community relative to our fiscal situation. Being transparent to our families, taxpayers, our staff is very important and I do believe that over. The last many years, we've built up. A significant amount of credibility. Because we've certainly presented what we have for information at the time. As information shifts and changes, we update people. And we also try to provide essentially the straight story, whether that's good news or bad news. Relative to what our financial situation is. I wish things were different and I would be presenting good news this evening, but unfortunately I have the task of conveying. Some difficult news relative to the situation we will be in fiscally for the next school year. It's not a big surprise to people who obviously were paying attention to some of the issues that were just described when you made your. Resolution about needing additional federal funding. But we hope that this overview and then the specifics Mr. Collins will present. Will help everyone who's viewing understand the very difficult. Financial situation our school district will be in next year. Absent relief or mitigation and even with mitigation from the federal government or the state. Regardless, we're going to be in a very difficult situation. The question will be the magnitude of that problem. So if you let me share my screen, I have a few slides I would like to present. And as you can see from the title, which sounds fairly cliche, but I couldn't think of a better way to describe this other than a looming crisis for the school district. I want to start with a few visuals of headlines from different stories that I've been reading in the news media in recent days. This was from an NPR article. You can see the title, the looming financial meltdown for America's schools. This from Education Week. Headline article, quote, too expensive to reopen schools. Some superintendents say it is. And underneath it may be hard in the smaller print below the. Photo, the caption reads that a California superintendent. At a news conference with Governor Newsom talking about. Preparing for deep spending cuts because of the economic collapse brought on by the coronavirus. This is an article just from yesterday in the Boston Globe that references the daunting issues that school districts will face in Massachusetts. If and when schools reopen in the fall due to all the different elements related to the pandemic. Photo caption talks about bus capacity being drastically reduced if. Social distancing guidelines are in effect, which obviously would be a major operational and financial issue for any school district that buses a significant number of students. And this is a screenshot of a press release from the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation. Where they're updating their tax revenue forecast, their initial forecast from the pandemic struck. Was that the state would have a four billion dollar loss in revenue. And then a few weeks later, they updated this to forecasting a six billion with a B. Dollar loss in tax revenues, which is about a twenty percent below what the benchmark would be, as you can see from the language underneath that. This is a major fiscal crisis for the Commonwealth as a whole. And that obviously will have serious implications for public school districts across the state. So let me give a little bit of an overview of what we're talking about and then before you get more specifics. Based on Kevin Mizikar, our town manager's latest projections for reductions in revenue. And available funding both for local receipts for things like meals taxes and. Taxes on excise taxes on automobiles and and other local funding sources. As well as making some estimates about potential loss of state funding based on the lack of state revenue. We are looking at a scenario where we may need to reduce our costs by an additional. Two to two point six million dollars. And I want to be very clear that this would be in addition to. The one point seven million dollars of cuts that we had recommended because we were already looking at a very difficult budget year next year. Before the coronavirus came on the scene. So in addition to that one point seven million dollars and twenty six some odd positions that we had recommended reducing from the budget. In order to balance the budget for next year, this would be new reduction based on the new situation that we find ourselves in. We also have the proverbial double whammy. We also have an increased cost that we're expecting to have to bear relative to how we might operate. In a pandemic and and post pandemic environment. These costs are either directly or indirectly related to the conditions created by COVID nineteen. Those could be anything from what level of personal protective equipment we would be expected to purchase for schools to reopen in the fall. Other kinds of physical mitigation in school buildings, just as when we go to the supermarket now, there are. Plexiglass shields up. We would expect that these are the kinds of things we need to install in our main offices, for example, other office spaces. A whole host of things we may have to do in terms of physical alterations to increase safety under the kinds of public health requirements will be. Will be operating under. And there'll also be costs related to educational impact of school closure. Ms. Clouder was just reporting in her. Presentation that looking at some different dynamics, interactive software for our students to use in the summer. We're hopeful to get a state grant to help offset costs of that, but there will be a cost for things of that nature. We know that there'll be other issues and Mr. Collins will speak to that when he makes the more detailed presentation. But at this point, we are estimating an additional two point two million dollars of unanticipated cost increases. Including those related to dealing with the pandemic directly, as well as some indirect impact of it. And I want to be clear that this is our best estimate at the moment. But health and safety requirements and other elements may mean that that two point two million dollars may not even be enough. But that's our current estimate around costs related to the COVID nineteen pandemic and its effect on our schools. So you combine those two things and you end up with a total of four point two to four point eight million dollars as a new budget gap. And again, emphasizing this is in addition to the one point seven million that we already have as part of our budget plan for next year. And I don't I don't believe it's hyperbole to call that a massive new budget gap. I do want to indicate that we do have one new recommendation, you know, we don't have, as I refer to in the next slide. Anything concrete in terms of additional recommendations for reductions. Frankly, it's too early because there are so many unknowns in terms of what the expectations are going to be for reopening school. And not knowing what we're going to face for or have for any kind of revenue from the state. It's too early, but one recommendation I do make this evening. Is to first freeze the compensation for all of our non-union administrators. And that's in addition to what we discussed at the last meeting, which is that we will be cutting. What administrative position as Dr. Luzot will move from. As part of her her primary duties as Assistant Superintendent next year will be to serve as the acting principal. At Patton School rather than replace that position. So that will result in a budget savings as well of a little bit under a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. In addition, the compensation freeze, I don't have a number on that, but that will reduce any amount that would have been budgeted for. Compensation adjustments for our administrative team of central office administrators and principals. Obviously, I don't make that recommendation lightly. These are leaders who are working incredibly hard under incredibly challenging circumstances. And it's a shame that we're not in a situation where we can recognize that with at least a typical. Cost of living adjustment or recognition of what the market is for talented school administrators. But the financial reality of the volume and magnitude that I just described leads me to make this recommendation. I'm just as a note there, just reminding the community that as of the last fiscal year. Full fiscal year that was reported to the state, Shrewsbury ranks two hundred and ninety sixth out of three hundred and sixteen school districts when it comes to expenditures on administration. That essentially puts us in the bottom six to seven percent of school districts in the state. And it also means that we would need to spend an additional one point one million dollars just to get to the state average. Of what school districts spend on administrative support and leadership. As I mentioned, I think there are too many unknowns right now to present an additional reduction plan. We know we won't know state funding levels until sometime in July. And just as the school committee passed its resolution, I certainly hope. Very fervently for additional federal financial stimulus that's directed to public schools. So that's the reality that we're facing and an overview of it. At this point, I'm going to stop sharing my slides and ask Mr. Collins to take over and share his presentation. That will give some more specific information as to why we're in this situation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And. Here we go. Of course, the school committee has this. Report in your school committee packet and certainly want to cover a variety of topics from what appears to be the revised. Townwide budget schedule. I do want to talk a little bit about how the fiscal twenty one budget process has evolved. Since its beginning to the present time. As Dr. Sawyer mentioned, I'll. Provide a little bit more information regarding what we think are some new COVID nineteen related expenses. That we will incur, have to incur. that we will incur, have to incur. Talk about the gap in deficit range again, with a little bit more specificity. And just echo again that this environment that we're in has a very, very wide level of uncertainty. And obviously, we're not sure and the timing is not going to line up in a sequential logical manner around when federal stimulus packages may be provided. And us having delayed information regarding state aid. You know, our understanding is is that the state budget process will be probably into the summertime. Potentially later. And obviously getting a better handle from, you know, the town manager on what the economic impact has been locally in Shrewsbury and the local receipts, so. And then we'll just talk a little bit about how we will plan to proceed in this kind of environment. So again, with regard to the schedule. We know that public discussions and meetings have occurred that will push the annual town meeting, which is the body that provides the annual appropriation and funding for all school and municipal departments on an annual basis. That that body will meet likely now postponed into July and potentially later. That's good, both good and bad in terms of you know, school operation. Certainly the, the good part is, is that if we can wait later to firm up our own financial plan by having more certainty about what the state aid will be. Then that can provide us with a better budget and staffing plan. You know, state aid right now, this year in terms of chapter 70 aid or education aid is just over $20 million. And represents a very large piece of the pie in terms of state aid and the resources that are required to run the town and school department, so. Getting a better beat on that and having, you know, percentage points on that either, you know, reduced by 5% or 10% or 15% can have an enormous impact around what kind of staffing we might be able to be providing next year. So waiting to get that information is good. It also provides, of course, some complications for, you know, how we start the you know, school year for 2020 and 2020, 2021 and how we plan for that. And develop class assignments, average class sizes, course offerings. All those things have a level of uncertainty when we don't know what our budget is going to be finally. And then finally, for our staff, certainly, you know, in our normal budget process, we're able to as part of the past budget processes, we've been able to provide some indication to staff who may have been impacted with budget cuts or layoffs in the past. We've been able to do that in the springtime. So that they might be able to seek employment in a kind of a normal hiring season in another school district. Well, that doesn't really occur under this kind of delayed plan when there's so much uncertainty. And we do know that given the magnitude of the reductions required, that there will be some level of layoffs and furloughs. So shifting now to a little bit more about the history, having just talked about the kind of delayed process and schedule for developing next year's budget. I just want to take us back a little bit in time so people remember the sequence and it was back in January. That Dr. Sawyer made his initial recommendation for the fiscal 21 budget. It's in that green bar. Just under 70.6 million. The blue bar is our current fiscal year budget at 66.3 million. So what we had put together was a plan to provide adequate staffing and resources to meet our strategic priorities and operations for next year. And that was a 6.45% increase. The town manager's initial recommendation back in January was of course lower at 67 point, just about 67.7 million. And that's what created that $2 million gap that we worked on. So that was past history way long ago back in January. In terms of trying to come closer to meeting the town manager's recommendation and what resources were available. Put together a $1.7 million staffing and program reduction plan. That's the blue piece of this pie, so there was lots of details provided about eliminating a variety of things from foreign language at Sherwood to a fifth grade team. Third grade position at Floral Street School. Not backfilling some retirements at the high school. Very long list of reductions that are, is available, all the details on our website. And then in addition to that, in order to help further close the gap, the school committee voted to set the full day kindergarten tuition rate at $2,200 instead of what was initially planned as a step down to $1,200 per year for tuition for full day kindergarten. So that generated $200,000 more in revenue, the yellow piece of that pie. In addition to raising fees for busing athletic student activities that raised another 55,500 in the gray. And then in that same timeframe, I took a look at current year budget and projected another $300,000 in surplus or savings based upon how we were operating. So all of those things combined came up to total just over $2.2 million in terms of closing that gap. And we were really close to kind of meeting a good budget plan, given the circumstances pre-COVID. And so the gap at that time, you can see the school department revised budget at 68.3 million. The town manager's revised recommendation, he had also thought that additional resources beyond his initial recommendation could be provided, so he increased his recommendation to 67.9 million and what was left was a $354,000 gap. And then you know, COVID hit. And so this is kind of the post-COVID scenario. And the blue bar again is where we were pre-COVID. Town manager's recommendation in the yellow, we had that gap. And now, given the situation where we he's forecasting significant drops in local receipts and state aid. Asked all municipal departments and the school department to come up with kind of a range of cuts. And for us, it was that just about $2 million to $2.6 million range in terms of additional cuts. And just in terms of trying to represent that here, a little bit more graphically. You know, I put kind of a side by side with where we were, pre-COVID reduction plan on the left. And then, you know, additional cuts on the low end of $1.9 million, but then $2.2 million in new COVID-related costs, so. That's what has this kind of net cumulative effect that Dr. Sawyer mentioned early, earlier of $4.2 million negative impact at for next year. And then if you were to take a look at it on the higher end, $2.6 million in additional reductions. We've got, and then the new COVID costs, we get a net negative impact of $4.8 million. So significant order of magnitude that we're looking at here. And that's just a chart to say the same thing in kind of more numerical fashion. So what are some of these costs? And I want to just, before I go through some of these things is focus on the blue arrows at the top in the wording. This is not a definitive nor complete final plan about calculating what new costs we're going to have for next year. This is a work in progress. This is just, you know, this, this could change every day if we wanted to change it every day. And we are changing it periodically. But we know that for certain that we're going to see a reduction in our circuit breaker funding for special education programming. And I have just forecast what they typically use as a reimbursement cost factor. What we were planning on was 74% reimbursement. And I've ticked that back down to 63%. That might not be aggressive enough. We'll have to wait and see on that, but just that alone is a $465,000 negative impact. We know that we're going to need some funding for additional long-term substitutes and day-to-day substitutes for staff absences as they take care of themselves or family members during the continued course of the pandemic. We know that we're going to need additional special education services to help students catch up with their work, especially those students that were on IEPs. We're looking at potentially, again, these are all potential, these are, this is not a definitive plan, but potentially purchase of additional technology for grades two through four. So that if we have a future intermittent closure that those students already have all of their devices at home and are not having to figure out home schedules to share them and coordinate with siblings or try to figure out technologies. So we're looking at that. Bus fee revenue, you know, I planned for a 25% reduction. I, I you know, couldn't tell you how many fewer people are going to ride buses, but I'm just planning right now that 25% fewer people are going to buy a bus pass and that we're going to see a lot more parents driving. And again, that could be something that is significantly underestimated. It's, it's really hard to tell. We do know that we, based upon acceptances for our eighth grade students at Aspen Valley Technology High School that we do need to add in budget for nine more placements. That's $153,000. We're going to need to budget some more for teacher salaries for full day kindergarten and preschool teachers based upon the lost revenue from this year and the refunds provided. And the fact that we continued with payment of salaries for all of those associated staff. We've just plugged $100,000 for COVID-related supplies like masks, shields, gloves, things like that. Learning platform, platform, software. Additional medical support in the form of nursing or certified nursing assistants at $50,000. And then we know that you know, our typical kind of gate receipts with community members or parents pay to attend football games or other events will likely either dry up completely or be significantly decreased if we're able to have those events at all. And we use that funding to pay for officials. So now if those events are going to occur in some fashion, but we're not seeing the same revenue, we need to plan for something there. So again, this is a work in progress. And we will keep working on it, but just those things alone are $2.2 million. So the wide uncertainty that we've all talked about, what will a return to school look like? Certainly that will be guided heavily by the State Department of Education and State Department of Health and Local Board of Health. What kind of COVID-19 related requirements will be in place? What if there were to be a localized outbreak in Shrewsbury? So lots of uncertainty and difficult to put together definitive budget plans. Certainly, we have the issue of medically fragile students who will not be able to return to school in a pandemic environment and how we're going to provide some continuation of educational services to them. That will come at additional cost. And certainly medically fragile staff. Or those who will contract the virus and have some period of extended illness. Or maybe their family members and that they have to take care of their own family and take a childcare leave of some sort. And you know, just trying to think about the, the regular school day, certainly there's not enough. You know, yellow buses physically or drivers, I don't believe, nor the financial resources to you know, quote unquote, double our, our bus service to provide social or physical distancing on, on bus routes. I just don't think that those resources exist or would exist before the school year in the fall. So how does school transportation work is a big question mark. And then trying to think about if temperature taking is required either before the school day or during the school day, that that's going to require a significant amount of time to undertake that. And we need to be thinking about kind of the cost benefit of the logistics of just operating a day in this kind of environment and what kind of educational benefit is coming out on the backend. So, you know, with all those things in mind, we do think that it's important in this kind of environment of wide fiscal uncertainty that we have a reserve of some uncommitted funds. Because we need to be able to respond to and react to things in the middle of the school year and where, of course, we work in a municipality and the governing body provides, you know, kind of a single appropriation at a certain point in time that we need to live within. Can't exceed, but then have these wide uncertainties. We need to have some sort of reserve funding that we can go to to provide continuation of operations and kind of expect the unexpected. So with that, it's probably a good segue to talk about the CARES Act, which has provided some measure of direct funding to schools. In fact, you know, the media reports are pretty specific that it's 13.2 billion, again, with a B dollars being distributed directly to school districts. And they're using a formula that's based upon economic need, if you will. It's kind of a wealth test. And so those students, there's a measurement around how many students are at or below the poverty level. And so those needier communities will receive more funding. And those more affluent will receive less funding. And so we know that Shrewsbury will receive just over $162,000 for, for this particular stimulus package going directly to schools. We also know that we're required to share that funding with Department of Ed approved private schools within the town of Shrewsbury. And we've done that calculation based upon headcount of school, which is required. And so our net CARES Act funding will be just under $134,000. So of course, that is very small sum in comparison to the magnitude of our problems and the magnitude of our overall budget. And our plan right now is to defer that into fiscal 21 and set it aside for future use. And maybe that could be potentially one area of this kind of so-called uncommitted reserve funding. So how do we proceed? You know, and how is our district cost structure organized? And so, you know, where is the, the reductions likely to come from? And it's the biggest piece of the pie, which is salaries. And so in order to make this whole thing work, we would need to reduce payroll significantly. And some of these other areas, for example, like special education transportation or special education tuitions are really hard and nearly impossible to change because they're based upon individual educational plans that really can't be changed. So students that are attending approved private schools and have been attending them all along and have that in their individual educational plan, those can't change. But we can't look there to save money nor vocational tuitions. Very small percentages of our budget are allocated to educational supplies, you know, 1%. And those are areas that we've already hit and reduced as part of the $1.7 million plan. So really, when you look at this, it really drives you to that we're going to be looking to primarily solve this problem through staff reductions. In terms of administrator salaries, Dr. Sawyer already talked about this, of course, in terms of looking first there. And having already that decision being made to reduce the administrative team by one and saving just over $119,000 there. And then also freezing compensation for all other administrators is the recommendation for fiscal 21. And we want to be clear and upfront and early on that recommendation. Some of the next steps. Clearly, the, again, the $1.7 million plan amounted to the elimination already of 28.6 full-time equivalent positions. the elimination already of 28.6 full-time equivalent positions. It reduced one yellow school bus. It significantly reduced monies for curriculum materials and supplies and some technology. But again, beyond that, we need to reshape our plan and come up with additional reductions in the range of 4.2 to 4.8 million dollars. And, you know, the state and federal funding is not going to be coming in to save the day in a timely fashion here, we don't think. So what does this mean in terms of order of magnitude? And just, this is just trying to provide some sort of representative example at a teacher salary, say, on average of $65,000 per year in having to reduce between 4.2 to 4.8 million dollars. That would mean eliminating 65 to 75 teaching positions, which that is not our plan. That is not our plan to do that. That is just kind of a making a comparison about the order of magnitude of the budget gap and how large it's going to impact our staffing and programs to come up with gap closing measures here. We're certainly planning to provide a more detailed budget reduction plan. As Dr. Sawyer mentioned, again, as we get a little bit more information nailed down on this, but it's going to have a significant impact in the district next year. So we'll continue to monitor all the federal and state budget processes, continue our reduction planning, additional reduction planning, and keep, keep in touch with the town manager. We do know that also, in addition to the direct funding from the CARE stimulus package to school departments, that each city and town is receiving funding as well. And so that information is relatively new. And we'll be working with the town manager on how that funding might help the overall situation and how that funding might be able to be used going forward. So there's, we kind of await more details there. So that's a little bit more of the specifics. And again, echoing Dr. Sawyer at the beginning that this is very serious situation and will have serious negative impacts next year. And it's, you know, it's frankly frustrating for everybody. But again, in terms of just kind of the strict task of putting together a budget plan, which we all know, you know, in the past, we work with very specific line item budgets and everything ticked and tied in, in, you know, as much certainty as we can bring to it. There's always some certain level of estimating. This really just kind of blows it up, if you will, in terms of trying to come up with definitive, assign cost to definitive operations next year and what education will look like. So we'll just continue to walk through that fog as we get some more guidance from Mass Department of Ed and work with the town manager as well. So that's what I have and happy to answer any questions you, the committee might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Collins, go ahead, Dale.
I, you know, there are so, you said there are a lot of moving parts and that's an understatement. I think if we were just dealing with a pandemic and no financial problems, just the logistics of reopening the schools in the context of science, that is, is not where it needs to be. Public health recommendations that change frequently. And just the, the structure of the schools and the buses and everything, if that was our only problem, it would be a huge problem. But then on top of this, we've, we've got a situation in which we're all charged with trying to develop a budget in which we really don't know what the costs are going to be. We sort of have a base level. I think what you presented today is kind of the low end of, of what the cost can be. But we also acknowledge that there, that it can very easily substantially go up. And then in addition to that is the notion that our funding is going to be way under what we need. And I, I think that we, the disaster plan that we need to prepare has to consider the fact that we may need to make a lot of plans before the final word is in from the federal government or the state. That it would, it would be a lot easier for us to walk back some of these plans than it would be to try to do things in, in September, for example. And so I really feel that as, as difficult as it is that we really need to move forward with the idea that we may need to try to keep the doors open and the, the students educated with very inadequate funding from the federal and state level.
Thank you, Dale. Anyone else? Jason?
I want to thank Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins for the report tonight. I appreciate the very clear-eyed assessment of what is an extreme situation. Here in Shrewsbury, we are not strangers to difficult budget cycles and to even occasionally dire budget cycles, but this is unlike anything we have confronted in many years. And I hope that the community, and I recognize that it's something that people feel powerless about right now. And I don't like that, but I think that the first step is that for the, for the community to realize the extent of the situation that we're in. And as Dr. McGee just alluded to, the financial piece is only one part of the very large, complex problem as to how we're going to deliver a quality public education to Shrewsbury students in the way that our community has become accustomed to and the way that our residents deserve. I have no doubt that the brunt of this will fall on our staff in more ways than one. And I would ask members of the community to be, and they, they certainly have been, but I would ask members of our community to be as supportive and kind members of our staff over the coming months as they possibly can. Obviously, I hope to, to the extent possible to avoid the financial ramifications of this coming down on our staff. But even setting that aside, I think of when our students go back to the classroom, that certainly, and Ms. Cloud has been talking about this quite a bit. You know, obviously, we hope that students are engaging with remote learning as much as possible over the summer. We hope that they're engaging with remote learning as much as possible now. We hope we're doing as much as we can, but there's going to be some regression. There's going to be differences in where students are when we get them back that are born out of what their home life and home situations have been when they've been at home. And that is not to, Shrewsbury Public Schools can only address that right now to a point. I have no doubt that we will, in one way or another, eventually succeed. And I know that that will come on the backs of our staff, our extremely talented staff at every level doing everything that they absolutely can. But I hope that members of the community see and hear the gravity of this situation financially and otherwise.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone else? John?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Doc, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins for a very thorough financial presentation. I think it's, it's not lost on me that, you know, just 81 days ago, we were presenting to Finance Committee and at that time, you know, it was a $1.7 million budget gap that we already had to manage. Now that gap is now $2.6 million or so wide or even larger. And really, I think it should also be noted too. I mean, every budget cycle that we've been through has its laundry list of variables, right? Between January and April and we, we, we were able to, you know, work things out to get to town meeting. But now we've just added another layer of variables with COVID, things that are very unpredictable. Really, it's kind of a one day at a time situation. And, you know, you really have to expect the unexpected and it's really just what, what's tomorrow going to look like, right? We don't know. You know, and I, I just think, you know, this is very challenging for, for all of us. And, you know, as I've said it many times in the last two and a half, three months, I mean, we're all in this together. We need obviously to make some very challenging, difficult decisions we've never been faced with before. It's a lot of information to digest. But yeah, it's hard to, you know, articulate the, the severity of the situation. So.
Thank you, John. Lindsay?
Certainly, there's dovetails with the previous resolution and the need for additional funding is clear to all of us. I think like Dr. McGee, I'm, I'm a little nervous that we're even putting numbers out there that we're underestimating the additional costs of COVID. I noticed the line for busing fees and some of you know, I spend some time in transportation and what those costs might look like for us in the various scenarios that have thrown out there, been thrown out there or that have been tried in other countries about staggered school days and all of this stuff that the costs are exorbitant and transportation is already a pretty significant size of our, of our budget. And even if we don't have people paying bus fees, keeping kids separate on buses, I can't even imagine keeping masks on kids, you know, the, the level of complexity here of how, how we do that. I had a nephew recently had to wear one for one hour and that was, that was not appreciated. So let alone a whole school day or even a shortened school day. So certainly the complexity is absolutely huge here. I'm wondering, do we have any sense from Desi in terms of state guidance of when they think they might have some guidelines about what reopening might look like? Not timeline of when we would do it, but if we, if we're going to be thinking about, you know, we've all read the papers, either staggered school days or half-days for some kids, A-days and B-days. I mean, and there's all sorts of things out in the ether. Do we have any timeline of when some of that might start to land at all?
I can respond to that, Ms. Heffernan. Today, actually, there was a superintendent's, an Assistant Superintendent's conference call with the Department and Commissioner Riley. Commissioner Riley stated that to expect some guidance approximately two and a half weeks from now. They have a task force at the state level that is working on this. In addition to that, they're looking to issue some preliminary guidance as soon as the beginning of next week relative to the type of personal protective equipment or PPE that school districts may be looking, may, should start looking to purchase. And we've already been doing some preliminary work around that. I think the general expectation is that with regard to masks, that the expectation would be that, you know, students and staff utilize their own. That's something that people would have or that would, but obviously there are going to be times when a student forgets it or something happens to it. So we're going to need to have things on hand. Went into some level of detail around, you know, expecting different kinds of you know, things as we mentioned earlier, whether that's Plexiglas, whether that's how school nursing offices might need to be run. But in terms of the actual plan, didn't give a whole lot of information, but signaled that hopefully in about two and a half weeks, they'd be coming out with some state guidance. And at that point, we'll have to see how directive it is, you know, versus suggestive. So we, we, we are going to wait and see about that. At the same time, we have planning underway where we are devising task forces, you know, underneath the office, the central office leadership team, looking at various aspects, whether that's operations, whether that's the curriculum and learning issues, whether that's student well-being. And that's work that's happening behind the scenes now that's, that's ramping up and will be ramping up significantly in the coming weeks.
I think, thank you so much. That's very, very helpful. I know previously we'd said we'd heard a lot about May 18th, you'll hear more, May 18th, you'll hear more. And we didn't get a lot more that was related to the schools and the way that we were, we were hoping. So I know the state is struggling too. So this is, that, that's through no fault of anyone's. We're, we're all trying to figure this out. But I think it's fair for the community to know that while you're doing work in the background, the, the level of tidal waves that we're riding here, we're not going to probably see those mellow down and all for, for many weeks. And so we're going to be living in this time of uncertainty. I know parents want to know, are we going to go back to school as normal? And, and they want us to tell them that. And of course, we're not the people who can make that decision alone without and I appreciate the medical uncertainty we're in about testing and, and all of that adds even more complexity here. So for the community, just be aware that as we try to figure this out, we're not going to have answers for, for some time. Even as we work within the town timelines of when will we have town meeting and all, all of those other, other complexities. So thank you for all, all of your work and letting everybody know just the difficulty that months and years that we're, we're looking at.
You know, we talk about unprecedented times. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Collins for response.
Well, I, I guess I would just say one other thing when it kind of maybe goes back to what Dr. McGee led with is that it's a complicated situation. We really don't know what the rules of the game are. So, you know, what we're trying to do, I think, is to try to take positive control of those things where we can. And things like disposable, low-cost PPE, you know, buying masks, gloves, things like that now. You know, we, we know that we're going to need them. We know that we will use them. They're relatively low-cost items. That's a pretty easy decision to take positive control over in preparation for the fall. You know, what's more difficult, just another example that, you know, is, is more complicated, the next level is, you know, is one of the new rules of the game that each student desk has to have a plastic divider. We've seen that in other countries. Those, the prices on those now are in the range of $50 to $100. And with 6,000 students, you know, you're talking about anywhere between $300,000 to $600,000. And, you know, we're, we're just talking about 6,000 kids in Shrewsbury. You know, is the supply chain available to put one of those things on every student desk across North America? You know, I don't know that they are. If I knew the rules of the game were going to be, yes, you must have those, then I think it would be worth buying them now to get our order in early. But where we don't know it's going to be required, it's really hard to, you know, issue a purchase order for $300,000 to $600,000 and then find out it's really not required. So that would be an unwise investment. So anyway, that, you know, it's just hard to kind of manage through and we're trying to pick and choose those things that where we can take positive control. And as you said, some of the just operational, non-educational pieces about school transportation for next year could look very different in terms of levels of service provided or not provided based upon resources. And same thing with food service. You know, typically our cafeteria operations, you know, have provided a pretty good variety of menu items and that whole operation could look very different next year. So we just don't know what the rules of the game are yet.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And as I was saying, this whole unprecedented time, you know, we keep using that phrase, but you know, it's unprecedented in health, but also the financial ramifications of this whole pandemic are going to have stark realities for our budget. We've never experienced this in '09 with the Great Recession. That was a very difficult year. We received stimulus money, but we had a lot of known things and there's so many unknowns. We don't know what costs will be, as Mr. Collins just said, what will be required. This is a very stark reality for the district and it's going to take a lot of group effort and planning and addressing really tough issues and making really hard decisions. But I know our hallmark is honest and open and transparent communication with everybody involved. And that will be how we proceed through this budget cycle. And this is just the beginning. It's, there's so many unknowns. We don't know what the end game will be, but we will do our best as we work through it. Dr. Sawyer, any comments before we close this section?
Certainly want to thank Mr. Collins for his continued expert analysis. His experience level and skillset is coming in is incredibly valuable during this crisis. Through the rest of the leadership team as well. I appreciate the commentary from the school committee members. I think that you are identifying exactly what we're grappling with. It, it is certainly very different than anything that I or any other educational leader has experienced in their career. It certainly is of a very different magnitude worse than the Great Recession was. And that was, of course, a very challenging time. I am confident, of course, that as a community, whether that's the staff here within the district or whether that's parents or taxpayers and community members, will, will do everything we can to mitigate the circumstances that we face. But it is, it is a stark reality that we face and it doesn't, will not do anyone any good to sugarcoat it. As Mr. Collins referenced, there is a wide level of variability. Certainly I will cross my fingers and, and fight all the other different lucky superstitions that I can around additional federal money coming, that the state, you know, the level of state cuts are not of the magnitude that we're projecting at this time. Those would obviously be welcome pieces of news. So there certainly is variability and we hope things break in the right direction. But even if they break in the right direction, we're still in a really difficult situation. And if they break in the wrong direction, it is going to be, again, an incredibly daunting situation for us to try to manage. But I appreciate the support of the committee in the comments and we'll continue to update you and the community as we work through this. We are working to develop plans behind the scenes of how we can reduce costs. But again, we don't want to be premature with that based on what we're trying to find out relative to what might be available to us. But at the same time, as, as was referenced, But at the same time, as as was referenced, we need to make different kinds of plans for different eventualities. And as those, as we move forward, we'll keep the community apprised.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Okay, next on the agenda, we have our minutes from our school committee meeting held on May 13th, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? I don't see any. These can be marked as accepted as distributed. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of A, addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. Purpose one, open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Kagan's. B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving and or releasing executive session minutes. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association Unit A, Shrewsbury Education Association Unit B, and/or the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body in return to open session only for the purpose of a journey for the evening. They have a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Sold. Second.
Roll call vote is required. Lindsay?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Don, myself, aye. Good night.